This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the September 14th, 2022 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of the Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom and the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter, and please select the zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage the speaking time. Generally, Kate Poirier is sitting down here. She's via Zoom tonight, so I'm going to look to either Sam or Carter to help with this. They'll notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under the resources on a computer or the more menu on a button. The chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question or comment. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Also note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to something that ordinances do not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those of special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Supreme Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, our, at this meeting, present are myself, Mary Ellen McKay, the chair, Mr. Jack Courier, who is our clerk, and Mr. JP Boucher, who are all regular members. In addition, we also have Mr. Carter Falk, our deputy planning manager, Mr. Sam Durfee, the new planning director, and Ms. Poirier, who is on Zoom. I'm going to take a roll call, though. Yeah, I'm going to take a roll call. Mr. Courier.
Mr. Courier is present.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher is present.
And Mary Ellen McKay is also present. There is no one on Zoom who is actually a member of the board, and there's no alternate, so every one of us will be voting on all the cases that are to be heard this evening. Mr. Falk, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are three, three agenda changes. The first one is the owner at 45 Langholm Drive. That case has been postponed to the November 22nd, 2022 meeting. The case at 7 Meredith Drive has been withdrawn and will not be coming back at all. And there's a case at 25 to 27 Elm Street. Actually, they're the owner. The address is 18 to 30 Gillis, Gillis Street. They have withdrawn their case and will not be coming back. You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions about any of the procedures we've just outlined? If not, or if so during the process, just raise your hands. We'll ask and ask your question. I will read the first case into the record. Jigna and Sachin Patel, owners, 69 Cherrywood Drive, Sheet C, Lot 2755, requesting the following: A determination whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred, or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the variance for a driveway that was denied by the ZBA on 7/26/22. And if so, a variance from the land use code Section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 32 feet existing, revised driveway 24 feet wide at right-of-way, extending to 32 feet wide, beginning at 17 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback. This is in the R40 zone, and it's Ward 5.
Good evening, Board. My name is-
Just-
We have to determine-
We have to determine if this meets the Fisher v Dover-
Yes.
So prior to that, then I will ask, and once you do come up, we will ask to have you state your name and address for the record.
I am prepared to talk about why it meets Fisher Dover.
Right, but we're, that's a decision that this board has to come to. Mr. Courier, Mr. Boucher.
I guess I'll, I'll kick it off. I think that this application is significantly different than the previous one. We see a lot of driveway width requests that I think this board and myself, if the driveway expands back from the street versus up to the street, well, first of all, I think that looks very different. I think the board in general feels that looks very different. And with the front yard setback, sometimes that's pretty far back on a property, many times it is. And so I think this board has looked favorably upon where there's driveway encroachments that are technically cutting into the front yard setback but are, but are back from the street, because I, I think they look significantly different than just being paved all the way up to the street. So even though technically this is still 32 feet wide, the fact that it's 17 feet back, I think is, is pretty substantial to me. That's just my opinion, but I'm looking forward to hearing other two opinions.
JP.
I would also agree, Mr. Courier. I think it's significantly different for the layout of the driveway. So just the layout of the driveway, it's significantly different. And then, you know, I think part of your reasoning, I think will be part of reasoning, you know, when we discuss in the case, if this goes forward. But I believe it is significantly different for the reasons that you stated.
Okay, and, boy, I'm caught on the horns of a dilemma here. I wasn't present. I was, didn't make zoning board meetings through July. I was out of state. So yes, Mr. Courier.
Well, just, just as a recap-
Thank you.
The original request, which the board, I think, discussed quite a bit on, so this was like an after-the-fact approval, so that the driveway was present, and then the request came in. But I think, as always, the board looked upon it as if it was also a new case. What if it hadn't been put in and was, was present as a new case? But I think the majority of the board, I forget the way the, I don't remember the vote off the top of my head as I sit here, I know it's in the minutes, but I think several members of the board observed, myself was one of them, that there are some other driveways in, in the, you know, the Maplewood, if it's still called that, that's what I always think of it, in the Maplewood area complex, that widen up as it gets further back. Perhaps some of those widening up are within the front yard setback. I, I don't know, but, you know, 17, the front yard setback in this neighborhood does go back pretty far. So, but I think the board and Mr. Boucher can, happy he weighs in, I think the board observed that there were no 32-foot wide driveways, you know, going up to the street, and that was, I think, a hangup-
Yep.
-for a lot of folks. And that's why, that also leads into my thought that this is a substantially different presentation because it would be skinny and widen up and match more of, perhaps match more of driveways in the neighborhood.
So it's like a pie slice.
Yeah, it would end up, what the proposal is before us tonight is, you know, it would be cut, asphalt would be removed, and then after 17 feet, it would go to the original 32 feet, if you want to call it original, so that you could get a car over on the right-hand side.
Oh, okay. And Mr. Boucher, is that a pretty fair, I'm assuming it is?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So again, driveway was at 32 feet, we found that excessive, and because, again, for the reasons that were in the minutes, and, and as Mr. Courier was saying, again, it's to reduce the driveway to the, to the, the 24 feet that's allowed, which is, again, now reducing what, you know, what's there now, back to 24 feet, and then with that sweep. And so, so again, significantly different than what was requested before, even though it was an after-the-fact request. The request before, again, was really, you know, significantly larger than what, what is present in the neighborhood, and what we felt, you know, most of the board members felt that there was other, there was another way to achieve what the, what the, what the applicant was looking for. And we didn't feel that, that most of us didn't feel that it was necessary to have the 32 feet at the street. Certainly, you know, we understood that there is a need for some extra parking, but again, we didn't feel that that was necessary or warranted in this situation.
Thank you. I appreciate both of your insight. I read the minutes, but it's better to hear you paint a better picture. So based on the picture you've just painted for me, I'm going to go along with both of you and agree with, yes, sir.
Could I make a motion?
Of course you can.
I'd like to make a motion that the application before us this evening in 69 Cherrywood Drive is substantially different than the application the board deliberated on previously, and therefore meets the Fisher v Dover test of being, in summary, significantly different.
And JP, thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. So the board has determined that it has met the Fisher v Dover requirements, and so now if the applicants would approach, state their name and address, and just speak to the variance.
Understood. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Flores. I'm an attorney at Gallagher and Kavanaugh, and I represent Jigna Patel and Sachin Patel, who's here with me. They are the owners of 69 Cherrywood Drive.
Hi, good evening, Board. My name is Sachin Patel. I live at the 69 Cherrywood Drive.
So today, we're seeking a variance to require only an eight-foot throat for the driveway. This is based on Section 190-209D to reduce the required driveway throat length before what I'm calling a branch can be added to the driveway. We have included four figures with the application, which show the length of the driveway from the curb to the structure, which is 40 feet, that the 12-foot right-of-way ends just shy of the driveway's midpoint, where compliance with the 25-foot throat length requirement would allow the driveway to be widened from, and the redesign of the driveway subject to this variance with an eight-foot throat from the right-of-way, which allows more than 20 feet of driveway from the street before a car is parked to the right of the driveway. As to the merits, this variance application should be approved because it does not diminish the quality of the neighborhood. An ordinary passerby would see more than 20 feet of driveway before there is a branch for one car. There is no room for an alternative to this variance, as the shortest length from the curb to the house is 38 feet, and from the right-of-way to the garage is 26 feet. The code seeks 25 feet of throat from the 12-foot right-of-way. The new driveway does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and is of the style you find on Cherrywood Drive and Hibiscus Way. This variance allows for good use of an otherwise small footprint. The original driveway was among the shallowest in the neighborhood. We are only seeking for so much space as necessary to allow a vehicle to park beside the house.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions? Mr. Courier.
For clarity on the map that we have in our application, it shows the proposed modified driveway, if we want to call it that, 24 feet wide, and then 20 feet back from the curb line is where it starts to get wider.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, you may remain standing or you may have a seat.
Can I ask something?
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
So thank you for allowing us to come back. So we respected the board decision last time, and that time, Mr. Boucher suggested, like, make a comment. Might be sometimes you can have the driveway next to the house on the right-hand side. So that's what we are thinking, but even to do that, we need to make a car, like a car need to go turn around, and there is no space to turn, because there is a retaining wall. So first, I had to make the car like a straight kind of thing, and then goes next to the, so that's why we want this. So it was like, initially, we expand as a phase one, like that origin of what we are planning to keep. And second, it went up to all the way to curb. So we will take out the second part, which is like 20 feet from the curb, and so if a board allows us to keep that first phase, so it will, we can park the car. And is, because of my profession, sometimes I have to leave early, so it will be very convenient for, yeah, because then I have to go to the hospital or something like that for the emergency.
Thank you. No questions?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see any. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none. On Zoom, is there anyone who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor of this application. In the original meeting, I had, I had approached the subject about this type of arrangement, and I think at the time, maybe we didn't have, you know, there was not an exact plan footage, and, but that was kind of where I was, I was going to, and I thought it was reasonable then, and I think it's reasonable now. Again, I think that what they're looking for is, is exactly what they need, again, for just the churn-in, to get the churn-in on the, you know, on the, on the right side. So I think it's reasonable. I think it fits in the neighborhood, and I'm going to support the application.
Thank you very much. Mr. Courier.
Mr. Boucher's captured everything on my mind, and I'm, you know, I'm in support of it for those reasons.
Thank you. I think of my own driveway that probably was done long before the zoning codes today exist, but when you drive in mine, you go to the left, and there's a piece behind here that you can turn, and there's a pad next to the garage. So I get it. You have to come in, back up, and whatever. I understand your logic, and I support it, Mr. Boucher. I am also in support. Would somebody care to make, Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Jigna and Sachin Patel, owners of 69 Cherrywood Drive, Sheet C, Lot 2755, requesting the variance from land use code Section 190-17, Section E, subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 32 feet existing, revised driveways 24 feet wide at right-of-way, extending to 32 feet wide, beginning at the 17 feet into this 25-foot required front yard setback. This is in the R40 zone in the FUOD overlay, Ward 5. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of property. Again, the setbacks are, is a large front yard setback. The driveway would be considered shallow with that setback if it wasn't for the extra right-of-way to the street. So the, so again, the home sits, you know, more towards the front of the property line. We find that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible to happen to pursue other than variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the audience. We find that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, and we find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we also find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Courier, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, your variance has been granted. As we will state all evening, any person has the option to appeal any decision made by this board. They have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time and your application. Okay. Case number two. I just wanted to check something before I read this. Okay.
I'm just going to shut that door, even as reading the other case.
Okay. Case number two. Nashua Development Company and Hamlet and Kerrigan, owners, Nashua Country Club applicant, 25 Fairway Street, Sheet 116, Lot 1, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-115 to work in a 20-foot other wetland buffer and unnamed intermittent stream to remove six trees along the third hole fairway. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 7. Is there someone here to present this case? Please step forward, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Board. My name is Greg Hollick. I'm the golf course superintendent at Nashua Country Club at 25 Fairway Street.
The floor is yours, sir.
Yes, we're just requesting to do some selective tree removal along the, the third hole. Six trees were approved through the Conservation Commission, and that's what we're looking to get approval here this evening.
Any questions or comments? And we have the, we do have the letter from the Nashua Conservation Commission that was dated June 21st.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Courier?
It's not really a question. I guess it's a statement. I think the application is very thorough and, and complete. It didn't leave me with any questions, and as you said, the Conservation Commission approval is in it. And from the application alone, I, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Boucher, do you have any questions?
No.
And the only comment I would like stated categorically within the record is that you absolutely concur to all the wetlands' special conditions. You understand them.
Yes, yep, we've read through those. Gary Flaherty is a wetland scientist that was involved with this, and, yep, those will all be adhered to.
All nine conditions, okay. I just, for the record, sir, I just wanted to make sure that we have that stated. Okay. Yes?
I have just a quick question, and I remembered this when I was reading this. It's not a problem. I just, the, the, the application was six trees, but the Conservation Commission states 24 trees.
Oh, good.
So I'm just curious as to what-
I didn't catch that either.
They gave, at the time of the site visits, there were two site visits. We were originally, wanted to take out 28 selective, selective trees along that fairway, and they gave approval for six initially to see how, you know, this next winter season would perform, spring and fall, see if it approved any of the conditions on that, on that fairway before-
Okay. Thanks. This is, thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Falk, because the letter says one thing, because the letter is a record, and the application says something else, this is okay? The city understands this?
Yes, I mean, the application is for six trees, and they were approved for the six, so we're good with the, with the six.
Okay.
If in the future they decide to cut down more, I mean, they can come back in the future.
Okay. I just want to clarify, Mr. Boucher had a really good catch.
The only concern was, was whether 24 trees were actually going to come down, and then you would have been back here.
Right.
Right, okay, all right.
No, there's only six, only six being-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Board.
Is there anybody present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Don't see anything. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom who has any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Again, seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier.
I probably already expressed my thoughts in that the application was thorough. I think the golf course is a good curator of, of the area. They, they want it to look good. They don't want to mess things up. I appreciate them, you know, getting the proper permits and having the Conservation Commission out there. So in short, I think it's all good.
Mr. Boucher.
I also agree with, with the statements that Mr. Courier made.
Yeah, and so do I. With some, oh, Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Nashua Development Company and Hamlet and Kerrigan, owners, Nashua Country Club, applicant, is 25 Fairway Street, Sheet 116, Lot 1, requesting a special exception from land use code Section 190-115 to work in a 20-foot other wetland buffer and unnamed intermittent stream to remove six trees along the third hole fairway. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 7. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal system. We find that the special, special regulations are fulfilled, the wetland special conditions as attested to by the applicant, and, and also referencing the favorable recommendation by the Conservation Commission dated letter dated June 21st. But it will also not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Courier, for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to approve.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That's three. Do not think that's unanimous. Mr. Falk.
Madam Chair, I've been told that the audio is a little difficult to hear for everybody on Zoom, so if the applicants can speak a little louder into the microphone, and even the board members as well, we'll try to make it a little bit better.
Okay, we'll all have to pull our microphones closer. Congratulations, sir. Your special exception has been granted. As I will state all evening, any person has the option- Okay. We'll all have to pull our microphones closer. Congratulations, sir. Your special exception has been granted. As I will state all evening, any person has the option to appeal any decision made by this board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, need any assistance, please refer back to Mr. Carter Falk. Again, congratulations and thank you for your application. You're quite welcome. Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Case number three. Elias and Myra Nikitas owners, 19 Royal Oak Drive, Sheet 56, Lot 43, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit by converting existing attached to garage. This is in the R zone, Ward 3. Is there someone here to present this application?
How you doing? Good evening. My name's Elias Nikitas, owner of 19 Royal Oak, and I was just looking to convert the garage area into an ADU, you know, one-bedroom, one-bath, for my in-laws.
And have you read all of the accessory dwelling unit conditions?
I have.
And do you agree to all of the nine?
I do, and I meet them all, so.
Thank you. And so the accessory dwelling unit is within the 750 square feet?
Correct.
I mean, if you could give a little bit about the dimension, the size?
It's a 30-by-22 area, so it equals 640 square feet. It's a single-family ranch level, so.
And that would be?
The requirement states under 750, correct? There is a diagram there.
Thank you. Does anyone -- Mr. Carrier?
Just when I took a look at your place, it looks like on the backside of the existing garage, maybe there's a porch there or something. Is that gonna be?
That's all included with the garage area.
Oh, okay. So like, everything under that roofline is --
Correct.
Yeah, I couldn't -- I wasn't quite able to jive up the floor plan to that, but now I understand with that explanation. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Boucher?
And just to clarify again, there's an existing door on the side, and that'll be the door. There'll be no door on the front.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step up, state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, I'm going to ask if -- I'll give my name and so on, but I'm going to ask if you could indulge me a little bit beyond, possibly beyond the five minutes, simply because I need to speak also as an alderman, as well as a budding resident. If that's okay?
Could you lift the microphone up just a little?
Yeah.
That's great.
I usually don't have a problem projecting my voice.
I know. Me either, but, you know, I'm having trouble.
Chairwoman McKay would understand that completely. So if you would mind, hopefully I'll be done before the five minutes. Anyways, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, I'm Patricia Lee, and I reside at 9 Maywood Drive, which abuts the Royal Oak property that we are discussing here today. For full disclosure, I'm also the Ward 3 alderman and here wearing both hats as resident and ward alderman. While I have no real issue with this proposal of an ADU, I do have some comments that are relevant to the approval of all ADUs here in Nashua and actually in the state of New Hampshire. I guess that I have another hat to kind of disclose, and that's I'm also a New Hampshire state representative and was one of the -- this was one of the things that came to us my first year as a state rep, at least for a few more months. Once November, December comes, I'm gone. The reason that I'm bringing up the latter is that, as I said, I was first elected, came up to vote for the General Court. It allowed homeowners to legally, as you know, rent out a portion of their existing home if the space provided to build a in-home type of thing, or even a separate unit. That would allow for something a little bit more than an in-law kind of place. After tweaks compromises, the original premise for the legislation was to allow those who were aging to gain additional income, as well as to keep hold of their property. As a result, the key to the legislation was that at least one of the units would be owner-occupied. I often say that even good legislation can have unattended consequences, and I've waited for that shoe to drop, and it did. I'm not referring to this case, because I believe that this case is going to be completely different. I trust my neighbors. I think they're good people. But the case that I'm going to speak about is something that got brought before you, and that was the one on Locke Street, where that particular owner came in, got an ADU. It was approved for an ADU, and then the property was then sold as a rental unit, two rental units. The only reason why I found out about that particular thing was because the -- and when it was approved, it was -- I went back, looked at all the minutes. Y'all did your job perfectly. It was adequate parking and so on for it, but when they -- the new owners rented out the small apartment, they said, "No parking on premise. You have to park in the street." She continued to get tickets and called me. "Why am I getting tickets? I'm parking on the street. Where else am I going to park? I can't park on the premise." After much work with Director Sullivan, we found out that this was an ADU and not a dual rental. Many things have happened. I believe this woman was asked to leave the apartment. You did not give it approval for a variance to turn it into a dual rental. And this is where my hat as an alderman comes in. And the issue that I have is, how do we ensure that something like this happens? I'm working with Director Sullivan and Mr. Durfee to make sure that we can do this. I do know the covenant is supposed to be done and so on, but we're working and possibly looking more towards changing the deed. But in the meantime, one of the questions that I'm going to ask you, and you did ask Mr. Nikitas, the question, are you familiar with all of those things? But the one thing I would like to make sure that you ask him and all other ADU owners is that, are you aware of the covenants? And will you agree that when you sell this, you will fully disclose this as an ADU? I really think that -- I think it's number six on your list. I think that's extremely important, and that we don't have the same thing. I don't want to rely on real estate agents to have to make sure. So let's see. Yeah, it is number six.
We have it number four on this covenant. The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, no. I apologize. The number six is the covenant.
Parking?
The covenant, I guess. That's--
The five is the covenant.
Okay. Our's a little different. We have 10 items, not nine.
We have nine.
His application has 10 items.
We have none.
The one that Mr. Nikitas signed has 10. So regardless of what it is, you know what I'm speaking of. I'm speaking mostly of the covenants and the -- that basically says that you'll let the next people know. And that is really where I kind of fall on this. I have no issue with it. I think it's a great thing for those that need to have something like this, whether it's to rent it out so that they can stay in the property and then will it on to their family later on, or if it's for extra money, or however it's going to be. I just think that we truly -- it keeps wanting to slide down. I think, ooh, yeah.
Trish, you might just want to take it out and hold it.
Yeah. Just pull it right out.
Might be easier.
Yes.
You know me, I talk with my hands, so you won't hear me anyway, so. Apologies. Anyways, that is the juxtap of what I want to -- what I really want to say about as an alderman, wearing my aldermanic hat. I think it's really something important, and if this, we just caught it because she complained about getting tickets. And she had the right to do that. She was very innocent to the -- in my opinion, so were the new homeowners. And in the end, they were both hurt. I don't want to put blame on anybody. I don't want to put blame on the previous homeowner. Maybe they didn't understand it well enough. Maybe the real estate agent didn't do their due diligence. I don't know. I'm not putting blame on anybody. I'm just saying is that this mistake happened, and I'd like to make sure we can avoid it. And I think that you guys, you can just -- when you ask him, did he read it? Did he understand it? If you would take those key items out and say, "You do understand what that means," I would truly appreciate it. I'm not asking you to do a lot of remedial, but that is something I think that's important. Now, for this particular property, I've got no issues with the approval of the ADU. I'll admit that I and the homeowner of 9 Maywood Drive have the biggest impact when this is approved, as that portion of the home abuts our residence. As a matter of fact, that garage is outside my bedroom window. So we would be more affected as they're doing the work and so on. So I think that's probably the biggest impact we'll have. There's no changing of it. They have adequate parking. They have stone alongside their driveway. I don't see any issues with that. You know, we'll just live through the construction, is what we'll do. And whether or not that, you know, whoever it is, whether it's in-laws or later on turns out to be a rental, I again would just like, and I could ask Mr. Nikitas, but I would like you to remind him, and he's a very knowledgeable man. He knows a lot more about this, actually, than I do, just so that we get it on record that they're willing to make sure that when they or if they sell that home, they will make sure that they divulge this. So we have it in record here for the city. That's the one thing that I really am asking.
Going to that, it might -- we follow the rules, the codes, the direction we're given, and the laws. So in light of that, where we have in our packets a nine item that we must look at, and we ask people to attest to and affirm, there maybe should be 10 that there's an item that, I don't know, maybe it's the city that does some kind of modification to this document that states, upon sale of said property, it will be disclosed that this is an accessory dwelling unit, not a two-family unit. And that would alleviate issues for the board, because we would then be making assumptions about something that is not in fact for us. So I don't know if it goes up to Concord, if it's, yeah, the state legislature, but I'm thinking it's probably here at the local level.
Madam Chairwoman, it is here, and Director Sullivan is looking at it, and I will be pursuing it through the Board of Aldermen. But until I can get that job done, I'm just asking for a little favor from all of you.
Yeah.
And by the way, this 10 item here, my number four here says reserved. So that might be the perfect place to put that, right under reserved.
Yeah.
They built it into my little sheet here, so.
You have an opening.
But until I can get that legislation through, and trust me, I will be working very diligently on that. I would appreciate, you know, nothing more than a favor.
No, I understand.
You do, just so we have it in the record, because the covenant does say what it does say. Your nine and 10, nine items do in fact say, this is an ADU. It should be disclosed as such and so on. So I'm just asking, until we can get that job, you know how slow City Hall goes, so.
I understand, and I think we'll work with Mr. Falk and Mr. Durfee here, Director Durfee, so that we understand, and we're saying the right thing too, because we don't want to--
Good point.
Yeah. You know, you have to be careful.
We all have to cover it, so.
Yeah.
But thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate that. And as I said, I have no objection at all, and I don't believe the actual homeowner does, and I'll let him speak if he wants to. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. We just -- yes. Trish?
Yep.
I'm back.
First, thanks for doing what you do. And I share your thoughts on the current language of the ADU. And this isn't about this case at all, but since you're here spending your time providing this information, I'm going to take advantage of that and say, my opinion is the, when the language changed to allow non-familiar people, I was very surprised by that. And I learned about that by the yearly spring training up in Concord. And it was pitched as -- now, I'm not sure all the deliberation that went on in the State House, but it was pitched by, you know, Ben Frost and the folks who kind of train us as saying, there's the big old farmhouse out in the country, and there's just, you know, the old guy or the old lady left, and it's too big a house, and so they want to be able to rent it out to hold that in the family. And I'm thinking, how does that apply in the city of Nashua? I don't know if it does. And I think a lot of these ADUs, and it's not speaking of this case, have grown really into just, you know, a two-family where the owner, we hope, stays in, but to create something just like on Locke Street where it becomes enforcement. I couldn't agree more that it needs to be tightened up if I throw out those words myself, and I hope that can be done with your help leading that.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Thank you. And Madam Chairwoman was in the State House with me at the time that this was happening, so she is also very familiar with it. If I remember correctly, and it was about six years ago, so I'm kind of going back in my memory banks, but when it was talked about in places such as Nashua and Manchester, Concord, there were multiple things that were being told. A lot of times, people, as they get older, they can't necessarily afford the tax and the utilities, and they don't need the large house. So if they had a smaller unit, they could live there. They could rent out the larger place, take care of all those bills, and then when they pass, it could be passed on to their family. And that was what the conversation, I believe, was up in Concord at the time, when we heard testimony and so on. One of the other -- Mr. Frost did, of course, testify in municipal. But one of the other things that was spoken about was that it -- the reason for having it as owner-occupied and not just doing a free-for-all for a double rental was that it took less impact on the community and the neighborhood. If the owner is there, they're less likely to have party alley, if you know what I'm saying. We see it all the time when someone rents out a house. Some of those things could happen. So those are the conversations that were happening. And we went back and forth amongst ourselves, amongst party, amongst the Senate, amongst the House, tweaking things. And I think we got it pretty much so right, but there's always unintended consequences, even with the best. And we find the loopholes. And when we find the loopholes, whether -- I don't think we can close this particular loophole, but is there something we can put in place to help us to educate the people that are asking for it, and then to give us that little tool if, in the case of like Locke Street, they should have been made aware of it. Were you made aware of it? We have documentation. It gives them the ability to go back to those people and say, "Hey, you said this, but you never disclosed it to me." It kind of helps them too, in a personal lawsuit, if that needed to be done. The city can only enforce the ADU. The city can't do anything to help this gentleman get his money back in any way, shape, or form. That he'd have to do in private court. Did I answer your question?
I'm all set.
Okay.
The other side of this coin is that now, up in the state and throughout the entire state, the codes are looking to change. They're looking to change these rules and the zoning. Yeah, they want to make it at least four. And those are the things I would say pay attention to, because that's going to come, sure as we're all in this room, in the next session.
Well, it did come, if I may--
I know. It did come.
It did come, and we defeated it. It was a very close defeat to it. Depending who gets into power, it may change. I will not be up there to vote for that. But I will go and testify, because there are places like Ward 3, when you look at Locke Street, and you look at Summer Street, and you look at French Hill in general, you know, you look over a little Florida and things like that. You just can't have something there, even on Concord Street, even with the big houses to try to do that. They are trying to expand it. As long as it stays enabling, Nash will not have to be forced. The scary part was they were trying to not make it enabling, but in fact, make it mandatory. It would be a shall and not a may. And that's what we are going to have to watch up in Concord. And that's when something like that comes through, we're going to have to go marching up to Concord and saying why we think it would not work. And in this particular case, they were actually, for the four unit, they were pointing at Nashua and Manchester, because they were only -- they weren't looking at Hollis. They let Hollis off the hook, because Hollis didn't have city water. So if you had city water and city sewage, you were going to be part of the shall. And so they were focusing in on Concord, on Manchester, and on Nashua, where we don't have that space. Maybe Ward 1 has that space, maybe over in Ward 5, they may have that space. We don't have it in Ward 3. So that's where I kind of -- and I was on municipal in government this year, so, yeah. I did not make a lot of friends. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Would -- is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this? Would, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher.
I think, again, I believe that all the accessory dwelling units, nine conditions have been met. It falls within the criteria, and I will support the application as it stands.
Mr. Courier.
As Mr. Boucher said, I think it meets all the criteria. I appreciate Ms. McLeary speaking because when I viewed the site, you know, I was kind of concerned like that one side of the house was right near what is her house. And I thought, well, to me, if that abutter had concerns, that would concern me. But here's the abutter not with concerns on that and also testifying that she thinks the applicant will do a nice job on this. So I'm fully in favor of this application. I mean, just, you know, we had some discussion beyond, a lot beyond this House. But the one thing the older woman was speaking about was like a stipulation. I kind of struggle with a stipulation. I think that's the kind of thing Ben Frost wouldn't want us to be doing because it's beyond what's in front of us. I, you know, and one other thing is when homes sell, I mean, realtors can do great jobs of making things more than they are. And I mean, how often, and it's often, that, you know, homes will change hands and something will be expanded. I'll just use that word. And the new homeowner is like, well, this is the way it was advertised or something like that. And, you know, I feel that the language would need to be tightened in the ADU language versus us making a stipulation that the realtor has to be notified. I mean, I don't know how that could be enforced. It's, I just look at the applicant and I think, you know, the applicant and his, you know, honor would not duck out of town and tell a realtor it's a two-unit versus an ADU. Obviously, I guess that happened on Lock Street, but I don't see how we can control that. But that's just my thought.
No, I agree with that. That's why I said it's, we have liability to protect the city. I think that's our responsibility. And if we're asking questions or asking people to make a stipulation to something that we don't have in front of us, it puts not only the zoning board, but the city at risk, in my humble opinion. And so in your language, it's, we're saying the same thing. Maybe when all these new zoning regulations and everything that's changed as of August, we sit with the city attorney and Carter and Sam, these are some of the things that we as a zoning board probably should talk about, about how we protect the city ourselves and yet the people, the citizens themselves. Because somebody got, you know, somebody got taken. Somebody was impacted and not in a good way. That's why real estate agents have E and O insurance errors and omissions because of this very fact. But we don't know how it happened. We just know it happened. So I agree with you, Mr. Courier. I'm in favor of this case. That's, you know, he did agree to the stipulations. And we have that in the record. Alderman Cleary did specifically state that that in the record was very helpful. And so, Mr. Falk, I mean, in the conversation we're having, maybe this is a discussion that the board does meet with yourself, with Sam, with the city attorney. There's some things that we really should probably look at.
We can certainly look at the ordinance and see if we can tweak it to make any improvements. But a lot of times, like even if we do something, if someone sells a house seven or eight years from now, we don't know when someone's going to sell a house and what they're going to tell their real estate agent or what, you know, the conversation between the sellers and the buyer's real estate agent. That's something that's really out of our control. We can put the language in our ordinance to maybe change it, but it's up to people much further down the line to do something about it, and we may not know about it, so.
But.
It would help, but I, we can't, we can tell someone now, yeah, you got to tell the future owner that this is only an ADU, but it's up to them to do it. We can't make someone do that.
No, but if there's a way that we get it in the record, just like we did the last time, it gave the city recourse. And that's what I think Mr. Courier, Mr. Boucher, and myself at this point probably have the most concern about. We don't want to step up and say, put ourselves in a place that maybe we shouldn't be, that we have to worry about too. Okay, would somebody care to, thank you, Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special exception for Elias and Mira Nikitas, 19 Royal Oak Drive Sheet 56 Lot 43, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit by converting existing attached garage into the RA Zone on Ward Three. We find that it is listed in Table of Uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal system. We find that the accessory dwelling unit special regulations are fulfilled by testament of the applicant. We find that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So with that, I make a motion, again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Courier, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Nikitas, congratulations. Your special exception has been granted. As we've stated all evening, any person has the availability to appeal any decision made by this board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. Other than that, thank you very much for your presentation, and again, congratulations.
Madam Chair, can we take a five-minute recess?
Yes, we can.
Okay, we're having some audio issues right now, and we'd like to try to resolve them.
Okay, we are standing in recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back with case number four. Felix M. Guzman, Lorenzo owner, 205 Kinsley Street, Sheet 87, Lot 62, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E to exceed maximum driveway width 24 feet permitted, 21 feet existing on Kinsley Street, requesting to maintain an additional 20-foot driveway on New Dunstable Road for a total width of 41 feet. This is in the RA Zone in Ward Six. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please make sure you state your name and address for the record, and you clearly speak into the mic because they are having difficulties with the audio this evening.
Why don't you pull the mic off and so it's in your hands? Yeah, great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Miguel Guzman. I'm his son. I'm going to be speaking for him because he doesn't know English.
Can you state your address, please?
205 Kinsley Street.
Thank you.
Good night, good evening. My name is Feliz Guzman. Feliz Miguel Guzman, Lorenzo.
Well, hey, because he paved a new driveway on the back, not on Kinsley Street, on New Dunstable Road. Because we parked cars before already, but when it rains, it gets muddy. And during the winter, it gets slippery. People have fallen there. So, as you have the case on your thing.
So you, let me understand. You have a driveway in the rear of the property that exits to New Dunstable, and that is what you are here to discuss? Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Boucher, thank you. And make sure you pull the mic up to you, they can't hear us either.
I'm just going to make an observation, a common observation. And I know you stated the reason for why you put the driveway in. Again, I live, I live in, off of Lund Road, so I frequently travel up Lund Road, take a right to go downtown, different areas. But I also know that your property is pretty much in a very busy street where speeds are definitely exceeded. You know, speeds are exceeded coming, when people are coming off the highway, coming over, they come flying down, and I know, you know, what that's all about. I mean, I think we're all guilty a little bit of going faster on Kinsley Street, but again, it's pretty busy. My original thought was, the reason why you were looking to put the driveway in the backside was because sometimes I observe people trying to pull out, back out on the Kinsley Street, your driveway. And you're kind of at this area where some people bear off, you know, on the backside of your property, but most people are coming down. And I always looked at that as, you know, again, there's a posted speed limit, but that's not always true. There's other parts of the city that, you know, same issue exists. So, you know, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I also think that you've got parking for a couple of cars there. And I would be, if you were here asking to widen that driveway to Kinsley Street, I would be concerned about that. And again, to park an additional car, you know, I thought that, you know, in some respects, this is more of a safer place to park a car. So I don't know if you could just talk to, you know, maybe, you know, do you have any other issues besides slipperiness or with, you know, trying to enter and exit on Kinsley Street?
Well, that's another reason too, it's safer to park on the back because you know where the house is. It's right after the curb, so people go flying down there. So to park on the house is kind of dangerous. You have to park in front of the neighbor's house first, look, and then kind of back out without trying to get on the street. So it's safer to park on the back. That's another reason too.
Yeah, and that's another observation I made that a few times I went by, because we always, we get these packages, at that time, we go look at the properties that are coming up, and I noticed that cars were being backed up. And I'm saying, well, because you want to be able to, be able to get out quick, you know?
Yeah.
Or if some, you know, if you don't, if you misjudge it or something. Okay, thank you.
Can I say something else?
Yes, of course, and thank you, Mr. Boucher.
He also wanted to lower the fence because of that too, because it's hard to see. And put a mirror on the other side, he wanted to do that too. Because it's kind of hard to see the cars.
Yeah, I bet it is. Mr. Courier, sir?
Yeah, just wanted to say, it's not really a question, it's an observation, that one of the things, the points of law is, is there something unique about the property that would warrant a request? And I couldn't think of a more unique property than yours because of the triangular shape.
Yeah.
And I, again, I agree, you got the curve, you got downhill, and sometimes cars are jockeying to get into the left lane as they come down the hill off of Kinsley Street. And even if this request, this is really something that they did, right? And maybe got caught or got observed and are here looking. But even if it wasn't done, right, and you said, hey, we want to do this, to me, it would make complete sense. You know, completely different than the, like, most driveways or like the last driveway where the whole neighborhood looks the same. And all the driveways are the same, but this one house wants a wider one. This is uniquely different in that you're on the back of the house. It's almost like you're on a different city than the front of the house. So I think it meets all the criteria. Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. But I guess I wouldn't make that observation to get it on the record that it is a unique-shaped property compared to everyone else.
I concur. And speaking of the points of law, it will not adversely affect the values. I think it probably would assist the values because the driveway would be in a safer place. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anything. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Again, I don't see anyone on Zoom. Mr. Falk, do you see anyone? I don't see anyone that wants to, okay. So then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier.
Well, I've probably already spoken a bit about my opinion on this case, but I'm in favor of it. I think it's an improvement to the property. I can almost say it's a needed driveway because that front one, I mean, maybe when the house was built, X number, you know, how many decades ago, it was a fine, nicely located driveway, you know, with garage, but it doesn't work with the traffic that's there now. It meets all the criteria, so I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Boucher.
Again, I think it meets all the criteria, and for me, it's, you know, it's a major safety issue, and I think it makes sense. And the driveway being, you know, it's on another street. So, you know, again, the appearance would never be that this is an overburdening type of a request.
Thank you, I agree. And they have the room. And I too am in support of this application, all the aforementioned reasons. Would some, Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Felix M. Guzman, Lorenzo, owner of 205 Kinsley Street, Sheet 87, Lot 62, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Section E, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 21 feet existing on Kinsley Street, requesting to maintain an additional 20-foot driveway on New Dunstable Road for a total width of 41 feet, in the RA Zone Ward Nine. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants' proposed use of property given the special conditions of property. Again, the property is uniquely located on one of the most, one of the major arteries for the city of Nashua. Again, we find that, that for safety reasons, that this driveway, this additional driveway on New Dunstable Road would serve the applicant and be safer for the motorists. And we find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Courier, for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to approve.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, also vote in favor. Congratulations, your variance has been granted. And as we've stated all evening, anyone has the option to challenge any decision made by the board and/or appeal it. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. Otherwise, thank you very much for your application, and again, congratulations on your variance. Thank you. Case number five. Edward J. Davis and Heidi A. Wolf owners, 126 Peel Road, Sheet B, Lot 538, requesting the following: special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct and attach. Number 3, to construct and attach two-story addition with an accessory-in-law dwelling unit on first story. And tail variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-323A, to allow an entrance door to proposed accessory dwelling unit facing Peel Road. This is in the R18 Zone, Ward 8. So if you would please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Edward Davis, I live at 126 Peel Road.
Thank you. Just make sure you keep the mic close to you, or just take it in your hand and hold it, and the floor, sir, is yours.
I would like to build an accessory dwelling unit for my parents to reside in. Our plan is to have them aging in place. And in addition to that, I'd like an additional, a door onto, leading onto my driveway, so that they can access, you know, come out of their car and get straight into their, straight into their unit.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Courier?
Well, I just wondering on the, the door, had you considered any other options, or multiple options, or none, just for, you know, trying to meet the criteria of not an extra door on fronting Peel? And recognizing, in addition to that, recognizing your properties on the corner, I mean, in a way, maybe you could say you see your house more from, what is it, Shelley?
Shelley.
Shelley. But anyway, but I guess just if you could speak to the door location thoughts you've had in your design process, I'd appreciate knowing what's thought about.
Okay, yeah, I'd be glad to. I think it's, I understand you don't like two front, I think the theory is, you don't like two front doors.
To make it look like, you know, two units.
And I completely understand that. Our front door is inset into a brick face, or our, our front door is inset into a brick face. It's lit, and it's, I think it's very obvious that it's the front door. I, you know, and I'm, I understand your point of view. I'm looking to have as inconspicuous a door, as small a door as I can get, going directly onto my, onto my driveway, which also would, would face Peel Road. I spoke to all my neighbors, you know, with drawings and explained everything, and no, none of my direct butters, including some people outside of that, had an issue with it. Explained the scope of what we were doing. I think you have a letter from the people that would face that door in support of this, Barbara and Larry Velandry. They're the people that live directly across the street from me. I, do you have, is, is that enough, or do you need more?
No, I mean, I guess a couple other observations. It, it almost seems the existing door, current door, on your front house, almost is like a faux door. Is there even a walkway going to that? Do you pretty much use the one on Shelley? Or do you, it's kind of hard to see from a guy like me who's just walking on the street.
Driving by, you're welcome to come by and, and go up there. No, it has a walkway to it.
Oh, okay.
Which comes from our driveway. There's no walkway directly
Down the hill.
Down, down the hill. That hill is actually pretty substantial.
Yeah.
It looks, it's more substantial than it looks.
I, I guess one other observation, since I did take a walk by your house, I was amazed to see your mailbox on Shelley, yet it says 126 Peel. That's like a first in my book.
I, I don't know, it was there when I bought the house 12 years ago.
Mr. Boucher, do you have any questions?
No, thank you. But I'll say that, you know, I, I think we always appreciate the, the formal drawings, very helpful.
Oh, okay, good.
Yes. One thing, Mr. Davis, there are nine points of law on an accessory dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
And you have seen these points, you concur with these points. Do you need these points read to you now, so you individually can assent to them?
Yeah, would you, would you mind?
No, I would not.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me.
That's okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent used and purpose to the primary structure, and does not exceed 750 square feet.
That's correct.
The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family dwelling.
That's correct.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling, or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. And here it says, no new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side, but this is why you're here for the variance. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed. The exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction materials.
I agree with that as well. With, excuse me, with B and C, with 3B and 3C?
Correct. Let me see, I just want to make sure that I'm stating this correctly. Yes, that is why you are here for the variance. So should the variance be granted, then that keeps you in agreement with this points of law. Number four, the owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Correct.
The owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashville with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees. And the covenant is, is written right there.
I, I have read the covenant, and I agree with it.
Thank you. Warming, additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house.
I agree with that. I have a rather, I have a, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what the dimensions are, but I have a large driveway.
An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
I agree with that.
The single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
I agree with that.
And the accessory dwelling unit shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings, and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674:31.
I agree with that as well.
Thank you. It just helps that we have this on the record. And indeed, we do have a letter from your neighbors across the street.
They're excellent neighbors, on the record.
It's great to have good neighbors, they make everything
All my neighbors are terrific. That's why, one of the reasons my wife doesn't want to move.
I don't blame her.
She says, no, all these people are terrific, we're not going anyplace.
It's a gorgeous neighborhood.
It's really nice.
Yes. Okay. Yes, sir? Yes, Mr. Courier?
Well, since we're all part of the discussion you just heard, if you ever sell the house, would you?
I don't, I didn't understand some of that discussion. It seems to me that an accessory dwelling unit, and I have no interest, I, I can't get my wife out of there. We have no interest in selling the house. But I, I think it adds something to have an accessory dwelling unit. There aren't, as far as I'm aware, aren't many in Nashua. I think it, yes, it adds to the house, but I have no interest. Some of what the representative was talking about earlier, as regards rental, there's no, I'm not putting any rental people in my home. I just, it just wouldn't occur to me to do that.
Sure.
It's for my, it's for my parents. Maybe someday my mother-in-law, I'll be lucky enough for my mother-in-law to move in, she's awesome, awesome on the record. But I, I have no interest in putting anyone but family in there.
No, just curious, thanks.
No, I, I understand, but I didn't, until she started talking, I hadn't thought of any of that. I, to be honest with you, I thought that that particular neighborhood is zoned. You can't put anybody that's not family member in, in ADU. And what I heard was it was zoned that way, but maybe that information's incorrect.
It was that way, but recently, things have changed, which is why a lot more is probably going to change. But having assented to all nine points of law, you have stated that you would live on the premises.
That's correct.
And I think that in and of itself. Plus, we don't know legally what a statement should be around somebody's future plans of their property, so it's easier for us to just leave it to the city and the city attorneys to let us know.
Understandable, and you don't know me from any, you know, you don't know me from Adam, and you have to, I guess you just, statements are made at face value, and
Absolutely. But we do know you're probably going to get some great Christmas gifts with the things you've been saying.
Hope so, my kids will be excited.
Okay, thank you. You may have a
Okay.
Sir?
Thank you.
We do have a letter in support. It states, "Your September 14th meeting of the Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment is going to rule on whether to allow Ed Davis and Heidi Wolf to construct an attached two-story addition with an accessory-in-law dwelling unit on the first story with an entrance door facing Peel Road. My husband and I are in full support of this construction. The architectural plans show a well-designed addition that fits into the property's landscape. It will add value to the home and to the neighborhood. We live across the street on Peel, and are looking forward to seeing this new addition completed. Sincerely, Barbara and Larry Velandry." Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with any comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support of the application for specific reasons. Again, as Mr. Courier noted, and we, as we see, it's property that's on a corner lot. I, I think, again, if you know this neighborhood, it's a very hilly neighborhood, and there's some topography challenges. And so again, the house faces Peel Road, but the driveway's on Shelley. So again, I think this is really the only place to put that, this addition. So I think it makes sense for the location of the addition. As far as, so, so for the ADU, I think it meets all the criteria and so forth. Speaking to, to the, to the variance for the front door, so when I first saw this, I hadn't looked at the plans yet. And so I was like, okay, so what's going on here? Is this, you know, flush with the front of the house, what's going on? So really, in essence, as we are standing on Peel Road, looking at the house, this door is going to be, I would say, that house is going to be about 28 feet deep. So it's going to be 28 feet deep, you know, one side, and the door is going to be really tucked really close into the garage, into that corner. So again, I think it would be unreasonable to expect somebody to walk completely around the other house, to go around, even though there's a door on the outside for a patio. I think it would be unreasonable for, for that to happen. And I think, again, yes, it's a door facing Peel Road, but in no way would I mistake this for anything, and I wouldn't really mistake this for a two-family or anything like that. I think it's just, I, I think the house is a great-looking house. I think that door could be, you know, if somebody had just put an addition for bedrooms in a family room, it would just be another door that maybe somebody was using to access the driveway. So again, I, I think the applicant stated right, it's probably going to be something that's not going to stick out. And I don't see it from the Peel side really sticking out. And again, the only way you're going to see that door is, again, if you're on Peel Road to the right side of the house, or coming down Shelley and glance over. But again, I, I don't think that's the focal point. I don't think it's ever going to look like the focal point of that home. So again, I'm going to support the, the variance for the, for the additional front door.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
Well, I appreciate hearing Mr. Boucher's thoughts, because I was on the fence of the front door. But I, I feel comfortable with that. I mean, I did look at the house before we got our package, you know, and just seeing the application, I got to say, oh, man, a front door in this neighborhood, you know? And then, and I certainly appreciate the detailed drawings, because it's a situation of when you have those, what you see is what you get, versus these stick-figure drawings and something, sometimes they can end up not looking what I think the board thinks, like, it's going to look like when we approve it. But, but I concur with Mr. Boucher in that the door is kind of set back quite a bit. And it is such a steep topography. If you're on Peel Road, you're going to have to be way on the right side of the house before you see it. You know, you have to look up so much. You're not really, I think, going to see it at all. It's, you know, you're not going to see it when you're driving, you have to be craning your neck to look up and over. And, and another thought is the fact that it's a corner property. If they met the letter of the criteria of not having a door on the Peel Street side, it would be like an additional, more obvious door on Shelley Street, you know? So, you know, the door is camouflaged, in a sense, by its location. So I'm, I'm over that hurdle.
Thank you. I agree. Plus, if they had to put the door, and someone had to walk all the way around, as Mr. Boucher noted, the ground, what about the winter? What about safety and stability for somebody having to walk through there? So I understand the logic, I, I concur. I don't think you will see it. And if you do, it's probably not going to register that much. It, it just doesn't, to me, seem like it's going to stick out. I think they've done their due diligence on this one. My question is for you, Mr. Courier. Do we do two motions?
Well, yeah, I think we'll make a motion for, for both separately. And we could do either one first, or, and just state, I'm sure it's Mr. Boucher, because I'm looking at him to maybe make a motion while I keybang away, would speak to the first one that, you know, and the board is likely going to approve the second one.
Right, so we would, if we go according to where that was written, we should go with special exception first, and then the variance?
Oh, yes, because, because you need a special exception, yeah. Because we're going to prove it as if there is no front door, and then we're going to go
To give it the variance, so that, okay. I will. I bow to both of your wisdom.
So we all set?
Yes, we are.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Edward J. Davis and Heidi A. Wolf, owners of 126 Peel Road, Sheet B, Lot 538, requesting the following, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached two-story addition with an accessory-in-law dwelling unit on the first story. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or undue impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. We find that the, the accessory dwelling unit special regulations, the nine points, have been met and have been attested to by the applicant. We find that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
And thank you, Mr. Courier, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, also vote in favor of the special exception. And now, Mr. Boucher, would you consider making the second motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Edward J. Davis and Heidi A. Wolf, owners of 126 Peel Road, Sheet B, Lot 538, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-32, Section 3, Subsection A, to allow an entrance door to proposed accessory dwelling unit facing Peel Road, seeing the R18 Zone, Ward 8. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, the property sits on a corner lot. The, the proposed door would be into the new addition, but right at the corner of one of the garages. of the garages. And then, when we are standing on Peel Road, looking, facing the house from Peel Road, it's primary address, we find that, again, the door is really set back at least 28 feet into that corner, and that you'd have to be really on top of it to see the door. So, we find that even though this door would be fronting Peel Road, we feel that it doesn't, that it would not, it would not be detrimental to approving this variance. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the audience. We find it would not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interests, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So, again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
And thank you, Mr. Carrier, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor of the area variance. Mr. Davis, congratulations. Your special exception and your variance have been granted. As we've stated all evening, anyone has the option to appeal any decision made by this board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. And again, thank you for presenting this evening, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Falk in the Planning Department. He was very helpful.
Well, thank you.
He really liked it. I'd like to say a thank you to him.
Wow.
There's going to be a little guy in there.
You're welcome. I think it's, it's an honorable thing you do, Mr. Davis.
Well, it's easy. My parents and my in-laws were terrific, so I'm very lucky.
You're blessed.
I am. I know it.
Thank you. Now, you should remember that for Christmas for Mr. Davis here. Thank you very much, and we will now move on to our final case of the evening, number The Francisco Ramos Revocable Trust and Julio Ramos Owners, Faustino Ramos and Rebecca Powers applicants, 82 Chestnut Street, Sheet 82, Lot 801, requesting variance from Ramos Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, 3,116 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required, to reconvent a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present this application? Is there somebody on Zoom?
Madam Chair, I don't believe they're here.
I don't, I don't see them, and I don't see them.
I did have a conversation with the applicant, and they said they would be here, but they're not.
Then we can't hear what we can't have presented.
So, maybe a recommendation of the board would be to table it to the next meeting, if so desired.
When's the next meeting?
September 27.
So, let me, I'll make a motion to table case number six for Francisco Ramos Revocable Trust at 82 Chestnut Street to September...
I'm sorry, 27.
September, 27th meeting.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Carrier, for the second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. That concludes our public business. Now, we have some minutes.
Do we have an agenda for the next meeting? I don't...
I don't think so.
Because that's two weeks away, right?
Yeah, but I...
We have one. Apparently, I don't have it with me. I can email it to everybody tomorrow morning.
Sure. That'd be great.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I guess we can't make any...
Nope.
Unless Kate has it and she can put it on the screen, but...
Yeah, I don't have it, and so we'll move on.
I think we have minutes.
We do have minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes? Does anyone see any issue with the minutes? If not, I would make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. And, Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote on that?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the approval of the August 23 minutes.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. I think that about does it, other than that conversation that did come up, that maybe we need to look into having...
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I wondered, why do we have the bylaws?
Mr. Falk, Mr. Falk has some comments.
Madam Chair and the board, it was due to that HB 1661 that came up recently in which certain land use boards can make changes. We looked at that, our entire staff looked at that and reviewed it, and we saw some changes to the HDC, to Historic District Commission and Zoning Board bylaws, and most of them we already do. We thought the only one that we could possibly add is number 9A, which is for the timeline. That's the only suggestion that we saw that could be added to the bylaws. It's about the 90-day period in which to approve or disapprove of an application. This rarely ever comes up because usually by the time an application is submitted, usually they're deliberated on within approximately 30 days anyway. That means a case would have to be tabled twice, you know, to not meet this, and usually we always take care of this. But just to have it in our bylaws, just to meet that HB 1661, we thought this would be a simple addition to add in, and if the board thinks it's okay, we can consider it at this meeting and one more meeting, have two meetings in a row, and then vote on it.
Just a point of clarification, the bylaws, we don't need to have all five full-time members here to do that?
You don't have to, but it's probably recommended to have all five members, just in case.
I'm just thinking, all five, all, all members have been presented this, you know, in their package, even though they're not here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess we could, we could make a motion in this first meeting, right, the first motion, and then...
We won't have all five next meeting.
Oh, we won't?
No. Mr. Shaw emailed and stated he would not make any meeting in September.
Oh, that's right.
I think we could conditionally approve, and if one of the members had an issue, we could revisit it.
So, again, we're supposed to discuss everything in public meeting, but if Mr. Shaw had any problems and communicated that with you, Mr. Falk, would that be, not that I don't think he would, but I'm trying to move this along instead of waiting several months. It could be several months before we have...
All five members.
All five members present. It could be, right? So, I don't know.
I think what we're saying is we're discussing at this meeting, it's presented at one meeting, and if there's a quorum here at the next meeting, we could take a vote on it.
I think we have, do we have to take a vote tonight?
No.
For the first?
It just has to be really introduced and discussed by the board members that you know it's here.
So, we can just discuss it and take a vote on it at the next meeting.
So, there's no vote tonight. You can just say that we see the change and, you know, maybe think it's a good idea to add it in, and the bylaws can be revised any time, really.
The only question I have on this, since we are discussing it and we're going to wait for a vote, if an applicant is present in front of us and there's something else that happens, as we've seen, and the applicant consents to a tabling, does that stop the clock on the 90-day because the applicant has already seen the case, because they're physically present? This, I'm assuming, means somebody is not, have not held the case in front of us.
I believe as long as the case is advertised, the applicant is here, they make a presentation, even if the case is tabled, I still think that that's an action by the board.
Yeah.
It's not a non-action. So, I think, you know, it's very rare that we have a case that goes on and on and on for more than two or three meetings.
But while we have the extra time to wait, could you check on that? If we have somebody physically present, like tonight, we had somebody who didn't show up. So, we tabled it, we, the board. However, we've had, in the not-too-distant past, an applicant that had, it was a driveway issue, and the applicant was here, we discussed it, we all came to the agreement that it would be tabled, and that's what we did now. The applicant, after that, found a solution working with the city. However, the applicant was physically present, so that, to me, stopped that clock when they showed up. But I just want to make sure that we have that clarification, and I could be in the weeds too far, but...
I believe we're set on this pretty much all the time. Even if something is tabled, there's a valid reason why it's tabled. It's tabled because, like, tonight, an applicant did not show up on Zoom or in person, so there's no action taken by the board. So, I believe that the clock is going to start tomorrow when we, when there's a new agenda coming up. We've had other cases, like we had one recently that's been tabled a few times for accessory use area, and it was tabled because our staff did not have a completed application from them. We thought we did, and due to the questions by the board and by some of the abutters, it was determined that they needed to go back and resurvey the property, get more information back to us. So, that 90 days, I don't think starts yet. I think that one is, is fine to keep tabling it, and they even agreed to table it to the November 22 meeting.
See, they were physically present.
Right.
So, that's, that's my whole point.
And sometimes it's almost impossible, like, say, a case is tabled once or twice. There's valid reasons why the board and the applicant agree to a table. We can't approve an application that there's insufficient information, or we don't have an answer to something. You cannot, the board can't and won't approve something that's, you have a question on, that's a valid question that might determine the difference in the outcome of the case, or maybe it's advertising correctly. Like that one particular case, we don't know if it's a different accessory use number, or we don't know if the setback has changed. They need variances for that. So, to table that is valid. To approve it within the 90 days would be a wrong decision because we may be approving something that we don't have the authority to do at that time. So, I think as long as a decision is made, whether it's a table because of valid reasons, it's done with the board's approval and also with the applicant's assent as well.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I just, I see it as Mr. Falk does, whether it's simply as an applicant not being here or if we're discussing a case and maybe there's some issues there, and I think we've kind of gravitated to where if there's a table, like, maybe to make a change or get some more information, you know, two weeks almost never seems to work out that month, much.
Right.
And more like, you know, two meetings out seems to be more the norm. I don't think the clock is ticking in that because we've, you know, we've taken action, we've made a decision, and with a timeframe that really the applicant is looking for. So, I don't see the clock as ticking in that, and I don't see us as ever having an issue of this 90-day.
I, I agree, Mr. Carrier. This may be more appropriate for some of the smaller towns in the northern part of New Hampshire where they may only have, you know, just three or four members on the board, and maybe they're, if they're traveling or out of town or not available, and there's no alternates, they may not have anybody to show up, and they only meet once a month. It can be easy to go by two months without even having a meeting. So, I think this is more geared toward the smaller northern towns with a very limited population and a very limited amount of board members, not like a busy city like Nashville where we're meeting every two weeks and there's decisions made every two weeks.
No, I agree, and I, and, Mr. Carrier, you stated what my point is. I just, I'm not in disagreement with this. I just wondered if the way we handled the tabling tonight because no one was present, does, is that different than having a person state it's okay to table? Because if they say it's okay, in my mind, that waves that 90 days.
Yeah. Yeah, we're all feeling the same way on this.
Okay, then we're all on the same page. Okay.
That's how we think of it as well.
Okay.
If they agree with it, they're the property owner, they're responsible for their application.
Yep.
They could also say, "I'd like to withdraw my application" and not have the board consider it at all.
Okay.
And, you know...
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. I may have not said it the same way you said it. But, okay. I think that takes care of...
Motion to adjourn?
Certainly. I'll second that. We adjourned at 8:24.